I'd like to call the Tuesday, October 20th, 2020 Papillion City Council Meeting to order. Ms. Brown, would you please take the roll?
Sunday.
Here.
Mumgarth.
Here.
Gaines. Glover.
Here.
Jaworski.
Here.
Klug.
Here.
Stube.
Here.
Ingberg.
Here. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Do we have an affidavit of publication on file?
We do.
And a current copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in back of the council chambers. We've got a special event tonight. We have an oath of office for our newest police officer, Chief Lyons. Well, Chief Lyons isn't the newest officer, but Chief Lyons, would you share some words?
Patrick, will you join me? This evening, we're swearing in the newest police officer, Police Officer Patrick Quintana. He is the top candidate from the most current civil service process. As you know, the police department invests a lot of time, energy, and resources into recruiting the best, but I think this is a first because we have a person here that was recruited off of a car stop. And I'll kind of explain. Like many before him, he's always wanted to be a police officer, but the timing to pursue that dream never seemed right. Patrick was born in Alamosa, Colorado, and later moved with his family to Lincoln, Nebraska, where he graduated from Lincoln Northeast High School. And currently, Patrick and his wife Carrie are residents of Papillion since 2010. During this time, Patrick has experienced and witnessed a number of positive interactions between our police officers and the public, one of them being a car stop that he was pulled over. He comes from an extensive background in the private sector with construction, and he has extensive experience with the U.S. Navy SEALs, almost 20 years this coming December. One of the reasons that I believe that the Papillion Police Department's been very successful when it comes to having great officers and finding them is because a lot of them come from the community around us. And they grow up here, and they find out what this town is about, and their families live here, and it actually provides something for them to serve a greater purpose. Officer Quintana, would you introduce your family and friends that are with us tonight?
This is my wife Carrie, my oldest son Hunter, my other son Parker, Graceland, and my little one Penny.
Now, Mayor Black, we're ready.
Raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Patrick Quintana.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Let's turn around because I think she wants a picture, maybe. Oh, I thought she had a camera. That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Nebraska.
And the Constitution of the State of Nebraska.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And that I take this obligation freely.
And I take this obligation freely.
And without mental reservation.
Without mental reservation.
Or for purpose of evasion.
Or with purpose of evasion.
And that I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Perform the duties of a police officer.
Perform the duties of a police officer.
According to law.
According to law.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
And I do further swear.
And I do further swear.
That I do not advocate.
That I do not advocate.
Nor am I a member of.
Nor am I a member of.
Any political party.
Any political party.
Or organization.
Or organization.
That advocates the overthrow.
That advocates the overthrow.
Of the government of the United States.
Of the government of the United States.
Or of this state.
Or of this state.
By force or violence.
By force or violence.
And that during such time.
And during such time.
As I am in this position.
I am in this position.
I will not advocate.
I will not advocate.
Nor become a member of.
Nor become a member of.
Any political party.
Any political party.
Or organization.
Or organization.
That advocates the overthrow.
That advocates the overthrow.
Of the government of the United States.
The government of the United States.
Or of this state.
Or of this state.
By force or violence.
By force or violence.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
I don't think we can shake, but...
(laughter)
Congratulations. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Klug.
Second.
Second by Councilman Jaworski. Do we have any proponents? Any opponents? Council discussion. Please vote.
Seventy-eight zero nays.
Motion passes. Next is item D1, Ordinance 1885, an ordinance to adopt the 2018 International Building Codes. Is there a council member that will introduce?
I'll introduce.
Introduced by Councilman Stube. D2, Ordinance 1899, an ordinance to amend section 205, 208, the 205 through 208, A6 of Article 33 Supplemental Use Regulations of Chapter 205 Zoning Regulations, having to do with beauty and barber shops as a home-based business or home occupation. The applicant is the city of Papillion. Is there a council member that will introduce?
I will introduce.
Introduced by Councilman Sunday. Item D1, Ordinance 1901, an ordinance to approve the issuance of tax-supported recreational facility refunding bonds taxable interest, Series 2020, with a principal not to exceed 62 million. Is there a council member that will introduce?
I'll introduce.
Introduced by Councilman Stube. As is typical with our bond refundings, staff is recommending a waiver of second and third reading, and this does require a supermajority. Is there a motion to waive the second and third readings?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Ingberg, second by Councilman Sunday. For proponents?
I didn't mean Sunday, you're right, and I should have known that.
Councilman Ingberg made the motion. Councilman Sunday's going to do it again. Stube made the second. Under proponents, I am going to invite Bruce Lefler up. About once a year, I think it's good to do an education on why we're requesting a waiver of second and third because that is an unusual thing we do except for bonds. It's very typical, and my standard answer is it mitigates risk in the bond market, but there's a little bit more to it. So, do you want to give our annual education on why we request it?
Thank you, Mayor and council members. Bruce Lefler, Piper Sandler, Omaha, Nebraska. Specifically to this issue and most often with the bond issues that we do, when we get the city to pass the ordinance to authorize the issuance, we have either marketed the bonds ahead of time coming to the meeting, or we're going to market the bonds shortly after the meeting to get the best interest rate available for whatever issue we're doing, whether it's for a specific project or if it's for refinancing. When we go out and talk to the investors to get their indication of interest and their commitments on purchasing the bonds, we need to be able to confirm those orders with those investors as quickly as possible. The problem, obviously, with waiting for three readings or going through a second reading is we sell, we would sell bonds, you know, today or tomorrow or next week, and then have to wait for that following meeting to come, and you'd suffer interest rate risk at the time. You can't commit to what those rates would be. The investors can't be expected to keep their commitment in place for a week or two weeks in order to make those bonds work. So, we do typically waive the second and third reading for purposes of being able to make commitments to the investors, get the interest rates locked in and committed for the city so that there's no interest rate risk moving forward in that particular situation. It's not specific to the city of Papillion. I mean, everybody we deal with on a normal basis on the issuance of bonds, we ask for the three readings, yes?
Can I ask a question?
Certainly.
Mr. Stube, you have your mic on?
Yes.
Then we'll jump over.
Yeah, so a question I have is with regard to the fact that the city of Papillion has a very good rating.
Yes.
And so, when you market these, I'm making the assumption, and I'd like for you to maybe confirm that or deny it, is that, does that make our bonds more marketable because of the fact that we have a very good rating?
Oh, from a rating perspective, definitely, most definitely. Your bonds are rated AA1, which is the second highest category for bonds being rated. To reiterate the point of getting those commitments in place, like I said, when we're out in environment marketing bonds for the city of Papillion, or quite frankly, for anybody that we're dealing with, we basically do that within a day. We have an order period for the bonds in the morning, and we get into the afternoon. We have the majority of bonds sold at that particular point in time. We can then subsequently make a commitment to the city or whoever the issuer is. And by either coming to that board meeting shortly after we've had that commitment, or in this particular instance, authorizing the bonds under parameters and going to the market with the bonds shortly thereafter, we're able to, within that day, or maybe even spill over to the second day, but within that 24-hour time period, lock in those interest rates and make the commitments firm to the city and not have to wait for another meeting for those authorization.
Mr. Sunday.
Okay, and I know you know a lot more about bond trading than I do, but is it not true that, you mentioned that we suffer interest rate risk if we, you know, but don't we suffer interest rate risk no matter which course we take? Whether we wait three weeks or we do it right away, we don't know where the interest rates are going. Is that correct?
Well, we don't. You're exactly right from that standpoint, but in order to set the interest rate on the bonds and put those commitments in place, we need to be able to move as quickly after getting investors' interest.
So, you're saying, are you saying that we couldn't approve you to give you a go-ahead and then have you do that at the end of the three weeks?
Well, we're not, I guess, I guess if you want to go that direction, you would end up being...
Here's my issue.
No, no.
And you might be exactly right. I don't know, honestly, but my issue is, is my, I understand it, none of us really know what the interest rates are going to do. If we did, we'd probably be very wealthy people, right?
Well, of course, yes, no, exactly.
So, given that, why should we amend the rules? Why should we amend our rules? I thought we were only supposed to amend our rules if there was a real emergency of some sort, and I don't view this as that. So, that's why I've always opposed doing this. I'm not trying to be a stick in the mud. I'm trying to, you know, protect the integrity of that maneuver that the council has, and in my view, that's been abused on this issue. That's all.
Thank you. Mr. Mumgarth.
Well, okay, I'll follow that up. What am I on? I'll follow that up. You know, Mr. Sunday's completely right that we don't know whether waiting is going to be good for us or bad for us.
Understand.
I look at that situation and say, well, if you don't know what the future's going to do, but you do know that you're going to sell these bonds, then you go with the certainty. And is it the only way to go with certainty is to waive the readings and go today?
Okay. Procedurally, the process could go to the extent that you'd authorize the issuance, you'd issue an ordinance at the time you, with first reading. At the time you issue that ordinance, you don't have any idea what the interest rates are. You're just passing a blank ordinance, okay? Then you read the second reading with the blank ordinance again, and then we're coming back to the third meeting, and that's when we're actually marketing the bonds.
Well, okay.
Okay, now, but I'm also saying from that standpoint, it's, you're still, you know, again...
Well, here's my very simple way of looking at it. If we, if we do it today, we know what the interest rate will be.
Yes, oh, definitely, yes, yes.
Okay? If we don't do it today, we might be winners, or we might be big-time losers. Now, I've always sat here and thought, I don't want to roll the dice and gamble with the taxpayers' money in that way. If I can't tell what the future's going to be, then lock it in, get it done. And that's why I've always waived the first and second reading.
Yeah, yeah.
Am I wrong?
No, you're, I mean, you're not wrong. You're not ultimately wrong from that standpoint. The only other thing I guess I would add into that regard is, when you talk about abending the rules, I mean, just because everybody else doesn't, does it, doesn't mean it's right. Okay, I'll agree with that from a standpoint, but as a standard practice in municipal municipalities throughout the state that we deal with, that in order to, again, know what the rate is at the time you're passing the ordinance, that in order to lock that rate in and make that commitment, the suspension of the three readings is normally done.
Mr. Mumgarth, do you have anything else? Mr. Sunday.
Just, again, so we know what the rate is. I agree with that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We know what the rate is, but what we don't know is that we could, we could have got a better rate had we waited.
Yeah, I'm not that smart, though.
No, I know, but what I'm saying is, I don't see the emergency that should require us to try to bend the rules just because we're speculating either way we go, in my view. We're speculating that this is the best rate we're going to get, or we're speculating if we wait three weeks. So, since we're speculating in either instance, we may as well just follow our rules. That's my view.
Yeah, you can't, but I guess what I'm guessing, saying is, the interest rate becomes, whatever, if you're going to go that process, whatever the interest rate is at the time is moot because we're not going to set the interest rate until you're prepared to do either the third reading or waive the two readings.
Mr. Ingberg.
I just thought I'd mention just quickly that back, I hate to go back, Mr. Sunday hates when I do this, but before we, before we start using a fiscal year like we do now, historically speaking, the council did not do it this way before I was on the council, especially. As a result, historically, we were paying a much higher interest rate by not locking it in and having a guaranteed sale. As Mr. Mumgarth said, I agree with him, and I know how he feels about waiving second, third. He doesn't take it lightly, but to me, I like the idea of he could come to us tonight with a fixed interest rate that we know what it's going to be, and he has customers that are going to buy it. And I guess part of the proof of the pudding also is, to use an old cliche, is the fact that considering how high our bond rating is, tells me we must be doing something right.
Mr. Mumgarth.
Okay, now, Mr. Sunday, you know, he's not entirely wrong.
No.
But when he says, what's the emergency? Okay, that's a valid question, and if we're waiving public hearings, I would ask the same question. What's the emergency? But then, on the other hand, I'm not a proponent of waiving public hearings, as we've gone down that road before. And so, I've always sat and balanced this and say, well, okay, what is the need to go forward and have the public hearing? And in the 27-odd years I've been here, I guess I've never seen the need to go forward with a public hearing and wait for the taxpayers to come in and tell us what we should do with these bonds. Maybe I'm missing something, but I guess I just never see it. So, I don't look at it as, what's the emergency? I look at it as, what's the purpose? And I don't see much purpose.
Mr. Stube.
And when I balance, when I balance that against the certainty of getting, knowing what you're getting, I vote to waive the readings.
Mr. Stube.
Yeah, I'm of the same way. Obviously, I understand where Councilman Sunday's coming from. It's kind of a, you know, a position of, let's do things by the rules, but I look at this and I say, we're talking about $62 million. We're talking about a lot of money, and I'd rather, kind of like locking in a mortgage, I'd kind of rather know, you know, that I can get a rate today that I'm comfortable with paying because I just don't know what might happen two, three weeks from now. And so, I've always supported waiving this because I think it's important, and I rely on the finance director and our consultant to help us make that decision. And kind of what Mr. Ingberg said is that, you know, we've got a good rating, and part of the reason why I've got a good rating is because of the fact that we have staff here that kind of know what they're doing and rely on experts to come in and help us. So, I plan on supporting it.
Ms. Klug.
Thank you. I plan on supporting this. I think there is a responsibility to know what we are getting ourselves into, what rate we are using as we plan to move forward. And if we choose to wait after the option has been brought to us, it does feel like we're gambling as opposed to taking our information and using what we know as facts. And I would prefer to work with facts as opposed to taking a chance that it might work out, and this just allows us to do better forward planning, and it does help with our ratings. So, thank you for bringing it forward.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Now, please vote on the motion to waive, and this does require a supermajority.
Sixty is one nay by Sunday.
Motion passes. Yeah, six, one, motion passes. So, the motion, so we have the waiver. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 1901?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Ingberg, second by Councilman Jaworski. Any other discussion?
Seventy-eight zero nays.
Motion passes. Next is item D4, Ordinance 1902, an ordinance to approve the vacation of the unimproved part of South 96th Street right-of-way in the south half of the southwest quarter of section 22 and the north half of the northwest quarter of section 27, both in Township 14 North, range 12 East of the 6:00 p.m., Sarpy County, Nebraska, with title thereto retained by the city of Papillion. Is there a, is there a council member that will introduce?
I'll introduce.
Introduced by Councilwoman Klug. Item D5, Ordinance 1903, an ordinance to approve the conveyance of title for that part of South 96th right-of-way to be vacated by ordinance 1902 from the city of Papillion to Papio Missouri River Natural Resource District. Is there a council member that will introduce? Introduced by Councilwoman Klug. D6, Ordinance 1904, an ordinance to adopt a property-assessed Clean Energy PACE District and to amend the Papillion Municipal Code to adopt regulations to create and administer a PACE program for the city of Papillion. Is there a council member that will introduce?
I'll introduce.
Introduced by Councilman Glover. E1, Ordinance 1888, an ordinance to amend Chapter 170 of the Papillion Municipal Code, having to do a subdivision of land in its entirety and to provide for an effective date. The applicant is the city of Papillion. This is a public hearing. Do we have any proponents? Do we have any opponents? Close the public hearing. Next is Ordinance 1900, an ordinance to amend the fiscal year 2020, 2021 budget. This is a public hearing. Do we have any proponents? Opponents? Close the public hearing. Item F1, Resolution R200184, a resolution to approve the appointment of Tracy Stratman as Recreation Director. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R200184?
I'll make that.
Motion by Councilman Sunday, second by Councilman Klug. Proponents? Tracy, do you want to come up and introduce yourself? Nice time for a commercial. And welcome.
I'm Tracy Stratman. Currently, I'm the Recreation Manager for the city of Omaha, but I am honored and excited to be here and hopefully be appointed as your Recreation Director. Lori has been a mentor of mine since I started my career, and I've been able to advance in my career with her guidance and support as a mentor, and so, as I said, I am very honored to fill her shoes and to follow in her footsteps.
Do we have any opponents? Nobody's showing up, not even your kids. Is there any council discussion? Lori?
No.
No, do you want to share something?
I have a minute.
Oh, you're going to be an opponent?
Yeah.
She's changing her mind. She's going to stay.
Any council discussion? Lori, anything you want to share? I didn't warn you.
No, I'm not good speaking, but I'm, it's bittersweet for me because, you know, guys, everybody knows how much I love this place and I love this job, and it's time for me to move on, and I think Tracy's going to do an amazing job. She has been a star since I've known her, since she was a kid, and I know she's going to do great things with our team. We have a wonderful team, very competent staff, who are going to be able to take the Papillion Landing and the Recreation Department in a really, really good direction for the future for this community. So, I trust them all in their competent hands, and I'll be around to volunteer so they can boss me around a little bit.
Thank you.
Seventy-eight zero nays.
Motion passes, and you can stay there. This is an appointed position, so you also get to do the oath of office, and you heard how long it was, so...
Mm-hmm.
(laughter)
Big Tim, take a picture.
There you go. Raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Tracy Stratman.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Nebraska.
And the Constitution of the State of Nebraska.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
And without mental reservation.
And without mental reservation.
Or for purpose of evasion.
Or for purpose of evasion.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And I, that I will faithfully and impartially.
Perform the duties.
Perform the duties.
Of the Office of Recreation Director.
Of the Office of Recreation Director.
According to law and the best of my ability.
According to law and the best of my ability.
And I do further swear.
And I do further swear.
That I do not advocate.
That I do not advocate.
Nor am I a member of.
Nor am I a member of.
Any political party or organization.
Any political party or organization.
That advocates the overthrow.
That advocates the overthrow.
Of the government of the United States.
Of the government of the United States.
Or of this state.
Or of this state.
By force or violence.
By force or violence.
And that during such time.
And that during such time.
As I am in this position.
As I am in this position.
I will not advocate.
I will not advocate.
Nor become a member of.
Nor become a member of.
Any political party or organization.
Any political party or organization.
That advocates the overthrow.
That advocates the overthrow.
Of the government of the United States.
Of the government of the United States.
Or of this state.
Or of this state.
By force or violence.
By force or violence.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
It's the last regular agenda items. No committees have met. Any comments from the floor? Seen none. Any council comments? Mr. Stube.
Yeah, I'd like to get a report from the city administrator.
I skipped that, didn't I?
Reminder to council and the public, the next regular city council meeting is Wednesday, November 4th instead of November 3rd, since the 3rd is National Election Day. Just to give an update on the City Hall renovations, the renovations for the first two floors of City Hall were included in the fiscal year 2021 budget. The city is moving forward with publishing bid proposals for the demolition and renovation work the first week of November, with bid openings occurring at the beginning of December. Provided that acceptable bids are received, city staff is working towards having the low bidder on the agenda for the second meeting in December. The renovation work is scheduled to take six to nine months, and city hall will need to be completely evacuated during this time. In order to remain accessible to the public, the building and finance departments will be relocated to the former recreation office on Second Street. Another site is being secured for all other city employees, and council meetings are planned on being held at the landing. And then another reminder that there will be a joint meeting with the Planning Commission on October twenty-sixth from six to eight, eight P M at the landing to review the final draft of the comprehensive plan. And finally, the missing middle meeting with Dan Paralek has been scheduled for November twelfth at five thirty P M, and you should have all received a copy of the, of the missing middle book that, that supplements that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council comments?
Just a couple of things. Uh, the we, the Thursday morning meetings, the multi-jurisdictional with the Health Department continues. Um, so if anybody's got any specific questions or, uh, concerns that maybe need to be brought up, let us know those. Those are at nine thirty on Thursdays. Um, United Cities also had a legislative update, and again, another reminder, if there's something of interest to you that we need to be changing down at the legislature, now's a good time to raise those. It gives us time to work on them before the beginning of the biennium, so uh, let Met Powers know if you have any thoughts or issues that you're concerned about at the state level that we need to be involved in. Um, then I did go testify at a, Chief Lyons and I test, went down to Lincoln and testified at a judiciary hearing with the legislature. Uh, they're having some internal hearings in regards to police reform, and, uh, we went down to speak, a lot of it in regards to us being a Calea credit agency. I think only one of three or four in Nebraska, um, and actually how a lot of what we're doing is probably best practice, and so look to us for examples of as, as reform is, is occurring, and so we're involved in that dialogue. And then the Nebraska Power Review Board had a meeting this week, a hearing on O P P D's application for the natural gas power generation that you'd had an update on a few weeks ago, and, um, they got a positive recommendation from the Power Review Board. And so that application from the plan's perspective will be going to the Planning Commission and then coming to you as city council, and in the meantime, uh, we have submitted a, a request to the sewer agency, uh, so they can do what they need to do as well, and that should be at the next board meeting, so that'll be coming forth pretty quick. Mr. Sunday.
Mr. Mayor, I, I just came to my attention that, you know, Tori's wife passed away, and I believe I just got a notice this evening that the visitation is running at the same time as, um, this meeting. You just mentioned the comprehensive plan meeting, and I just want to bring that to everybody's attention.
That is correct, and then the funeral is the next day. That's correct.
Thank you.
So thank you for that, and our condolences to him, and speaking of that, if people aren't aware, we've had two former mayors pass away, Pete Goodman, and then Mike Greco passed on Friday, I believe. Um, so condolences to those as well, so thank you for pointing that out. Any other council comments? Ms. Klug.
Thank you. Um, on a happy note, I've been contacted by two separate citizens within about the last three or four days, and they were reporting to me the professional level with which they have been dealing with the police department, and that kind of goes on with what you said about Calea. Um, whether they've had people speeding past their homes and the police just noticed it, or issues with, um, vehicles in their front yards. They have been extremely pleased with the, uh, quality of officers that we have and how they, uh, handle themselves even in stressful situations, so hats off to our police department and great appreciation. When unsolicited calls come in like that, it's wonderful.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Motion to adjourn? Oops, I'm sorry. And. Right?
It did, yes.
And it goes through Sunday.
Yep, five to seven.
And what are the times?
Excuse me, seven to five, yep.
Seven to five, and the important thing to remember, uh, if you're talking to somebody, is because of COVID, we have protections in place, and the main one is staff is not helping people unload, so, um, the people have gotten to, uh, used to our level of service, so that might be a, a question, so, uh, beware of that. Mr. Sunday.
As I understand it, Jeff, the only day that you're taking shredding items is on Saturday? That's correct, yes, seven to noon on Saturday.
Okay, thanks.
And there, there will be assistance, uh, from the vendor that's providing that service to help unload, uh, just the, the shredding materials.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Councilman Glover. Second by Councilman Stube. Please vote.
Seventy-eight zero nays.
We are adjourned.